Okay, I believe it's the time, sorry we ran off of a meeting we had in front of this. If everyone was standing, Commissioner Jordan is going to come in.
That's right. Father will come this morning to thank you, Lord, for all your grace and mercy and blessings, blessing us, Lord, to be able to come out this morning and conduct the business of Gates County. Lord, we thank you for your blessings upon this nation, our state, and our county. We ask now, Lord, your blessings and guidance as we discern the business of Gates County. We thank you for the privilege you serve, and we ask all your blessings, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to call the regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. First item on it is approval of amendments from August the 15th, 2015. Are there any corrections?
Chair, I don't have a correction. I have one condition I requested. Page sixteen seventy-
One minute. She's not here. Hold on, I'm gonna write this for her. Okay, continue on, Commissioner Jordan.
All right. On page sixteen seventy-two. Where it says, also, in the first paragraph, it says, "Also, General Statute 168-381A, zoning regulations for manor and tract at home, read as follows. I'd like to ask between to put a comma behind 168-381, 383.1, comma, as implemented by General Statute 153A-383.1 for counties, comma.
As implemented?
As implemented by General Statute 153A-383.1 for counties.
Can you elaborate on that?
168-383.1 is for cities, and 153A-383.1 specifies that for counties to use that ordinance.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
So moved.
Motion's denied. I have a second. Motion denied, and I have a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved as corrected. Okay, in front of you, you have an agenda. I would like adjustments to the agenda. There's one that we might need to just make the everyone aware of. We have Matt, my counselor here today, give a report that will be given in closed session. We might have to go in closed session prior to lunch, so he does not have to stay. We'll just have a quiet right here to see how, what the agenda moves along.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that we improve the agenda before we consider the situation of state, in Jesus' name.
I didn't have one condition.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. Owens will allow me to do it.
Sure, I will draw the measure.
Under new business, I'd like to have a discussion on allocation of funds for congregate meals.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion concerning the agenda as adjusted and with consideration.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the agenda as amended by Commissioner Jordan and take into consideration one of your comments on the best idea.
Do you want to have a second?
Second.
All right, the motion's denied, and I have a second. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, the amender, agenda is amended. Okay, delegations. Anyone signed up? Okay, any additional delegations?
No.
Okay, administrative reports. I believe we start with county manager.
This is for July 24th through August 19th. The historic courthouse, the west wall, has been covered and scaffolding removed, and since August 19th, I have had a very short discussion with Shelley Sacks, with Sacks Conservation. She has been in the consultation with Mr. Jack Peet, who is the historian, historian who has worked with Colleen Williamsburg and is a brick expert. He and she are working to determine the best labs to, that we could see in brick samples too, and she is working at the price, and she has also been in consultation with John Zellweger with Clear Skates. So once she and Mr. Peet can finish their work, they want to share that with all of us. The tri-county animal shelter, Chawan, Pupunins, and Gates representatives met with animal shelter staff and the aware volunteers on August the 19th. Dana Gehin, who is the shelter director, and Barbara Yates, the aware coordinator. They thanked Gates County Animal Control for all the work it has done to improve animal control within the county. They also appreciated the staff attending the Horse Cruelty and Investigation Class that was recently held. Gates County Department of Social Services was also thanked for handing out aware literature that deals with the reduced price for the Spain neuter program. New work by everyone involved and more people Spain and neutering their animals, the shelter took fewer animals in 2014 than previous years, and the number that they like to highlight was that specifically 450 fewer cats were turned into the shelter in 2014 than 213. The shelter continues to partner with shelters and agency outside of our area to rehome animals. A new location that they were discussing at that meeting was Philadelphia. Work to improve the shelter is continuing, and there is still a initial need to add additional space to the shelter. Bids will be received by Chawan County over the coming months for a concrete pad, building, and roof to cover two additional buildings. Please be aware that the shelter will be asking for additional funds in fiscal year 1617 for this addition, and Ms. Gehin would like to send adoption policy to be implemented at the shelter, and one will be discussed at a future meeting. In your handouts and correspondence, there is a letter from the Aware Association that was written in the local newspaper. On August the 7th, I participated in the Northeast Economic Developers Home Conference with NCE, and projects that NCE were bringing forward were discussed. And on August 13th, Chair Hoffler and I attended the EDA State Funding Seminar at the Vernon James Center in Plymouth. Representatives highlighted grant and loan sources from their respective agency. And since this report, I have three pieces of good news that I would like to share.
Always good news.
At the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the PCG landfill was recognized for the Excellence and Innovation Award for the cattle grazing on closed landfill cap, and this award was accepted by Brad Gardner at the NCACC Conference in Greenville last week. NCACC has said that they will come to each of the respective counties to make a short presentation as well. So once that is, they discuss that with me, I'll make you aware of which date that will take place. The other supports of good news has to do with community center. As you may recall, in July, the Commissioners passed a resolution supporting the application for inclusive playground equipment. Well, Lulu Yor received a phone call about a week and a half ago, and instead of receiving one piece of playground equipment, Gates County has been selected as the recipient of a $250,000 playground grant. And on Friday, the Commissioners, as well as Board of Education members, are invited to participate in a photo op at nine o'clock at the community center. On another note, and that was, excuse me, that was through ECBH. On another note, Blue Cross Blue Shield sent an application for playprints, which were decals or paintings to be put on cement pads around the playground, so that children can practice hopscotch, leapfrog, that sort of thing. An application was submitted, and it was for two of those. Forty-one sites were selected from across the state. Gates County once again was selected, and instead of receiving two of those playprints, we will now receive five. A press release is forthcoming, and Lulu Yor has selected the places for the, for those playprints to be installed. The dates for both of these to be installed are unknown at this time.
Going to the, one of the $250,000 grant, are they going to put that where the playground exists now, or where's it?
It will have to go where the playground is now.
As I say, I think space is limited.
Yes, yes, space is limited. It will have to go where it is now. Lulu does not have a lot of detail. She's hoping to find out more Friday, when the representatives are here.
Sounds like we're gonna have a one playprint. Very good news. Good news. Hopefully, we have good news from our financing tax reports. Let's see finance. You all have the reports from July, particularly this year. Any questions? I have budget amendments, some that we can make available. You like? Budget this morning, yeah. That's the new business. Okay, any questions for Mr. Tipton? And thank you for the job you're doing. Your flame?
Good morning. Obviously, nobody got a tax bill yet in the county. I just wanted to point that out, that we are working towards that goal, September 2nd. We are dealing with our vendor Keystone with computing issues, so we have not forgot those tax bills. Working towards that. We don't want to send them out with incorrect values nor information, so I just wanted to mention that.
Do you have a date you might be sending them on?
If we target getting, resolving the issues they have to resolve, we may be able to target that, the 14th of September. Of course, we use a third-party vendor in Mount Airy, North Carolina, to send out our bills, of course, so. And looking at everything, like I said, that was just some issues that have come up, unforeseeable. Of course, we finally finished going parallel that first week in August. You know, we no longer had to do double day entries, so that was a good thing. So I just wanted to mention, we have not forgot the tax bills. But in lieu of that, prepayments can be made, obviously. Those people who have been paying, they can be applied. That's not any, any lack on that, so.
I believe the General Statute specifies the date of their tax bills to be sent, September 1st.
That is correct, September 1st, yeah.
September 1st, meaning that we're gonna be somewhat late. I believe the due date is also January the 6th or 5th of the following year.
That's right.
Do you still need to extend the payment date, January 6th, since we're gonna be late? Give them the notice.
Don't believe so, because those people who generally pay anyway are making prepayments towards those accounts. But, I mean, I will follow up with Department of Revenue and ask any insight on that, just to be sure that we're covered from, from that standpoint. There is, I believe Camden also has not sent out bills for, for whatever reason, so there are just one or two, and they're going through their revowels, so. But I will check with Department of Revenue, just to see if there's any need for extension with that. But those people who generally pay and pay on time, they are making prepayments and things of that nature, so there's no danger that those prepayments won't be allocated. But I will, I'll follow up with Department of Revenue to be sure.
Thank you.
So then you also have a chance to look at the collector's report for August there.
I believe that Zaccheaus has come through, but they're only subsidizing dollars.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And we, on one delinquent account, we have secured a low firm I'll just mention, out of, in working with Zaccheaus, Thompson, and Perezza. They'll be serving as guardian at Lydon, as well as Mr. Wendell Spivey. As we move towards some delinquent accounts that are gonna hit the courthouse steps very soon, so we have made contact and Zaccheaus as well with Thompson and Perez. We need somebody to represent those parties that were either in the military or were involved in large air properties or state properties, and they'll serve in that role as guardian at Lydon, so. I did send a follow-up email from Mr. Ellis on those three accounts. I included that just as, and printed out some copies for you, that they finally could make some comments on those accounts and where we were with that. And, you know, as I said, Mr. Ellis is involved in various other acts, as in an attorney, not just foreclosure, so he's distracted, perhaps in that way, where Zaccheaus is not. They are able to focus solely on doing foreclosure accounts. But he did, he did respond and give an update on those accounts with Ellis.
Isn't that, is that unusual for guardian at Lydon to participate instead of an attorney?
Well, they participate in that role, and it's not very unusual, based on the fact that if somebody is, like I said, in the military, or they, we have several, as in the case of that one property that Zaccheaus needs representation for. They, they serve in that role to represent, making sure the county and all parties are duly served. So it is not very unusual. You know, they are able to work with Thompson and Perez for that reason, you know.
Most of the time, when I hear that, there's a juvenile involved, had interest. That's one of that's the case.
Right, well, it's, I think in the broader term is, is the umbrella term that goes for military or people who are away, and those particular accounts, we've had to serve by publication. Those people are not local, or if they're, they're in California. They, you know, giving them the opportunity to respond, and that attorney, you know, represents them on that behalf. I know it generally is a term for, we think juveniles or some court.
State pays for that?
Well, actually, in this case, it'll be charged to the accountant in question, any and all fees associated with that. Mr. Wendell Spivey and Thompson and Perezza, with those charges, they'll be added to the account, at which time it's sold. That'll be, that property, that tally, if you will, will be accumulated part, if it's $600 or $6,000, it'll be included towards that, that delinquency, you might say, as a charge, as they have to charge, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
All right, thank you.
I guess we'll look forward, I guess, a good long time.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, thank you.
With me.
You can kind of alter the notes, so you can start saving.
All right.
Any other department heads, reports? I see Crystal is in the room. Crystal, have anything? Yes, I see Patrice is in the room.
I do have one question for, thank you.
Ma'am.
The EIC building, are we using that handle?
No, sir.
When do we plan to put that back on?
We have just received a report from EI Group that is not ready for anyone to go in to refinish floors. We have some additional work that needs to be done, and Crystal's working with them to determine what that work is. It did not pass their standards of being clean, of the mold problem.
Is there any protection?
No, because it depends on when the people that Crystal's working with, the contractor is able to get back to redo what needs to be done. And then once that's done, however, it still needs, or we're seeing to be refinished, there's other work that needs to be done to the building.
And who do we plan to put back in? I stand right now.
I have thoughts. My thought was to probably put elections over there. There's still some additional space. We do have, EIC has asked about having an office back. She is here, I think, once a week, so my thought was if there's, there's an extra office over there, that can be shared. Veteran Services has approached me about wanting an office. They're here maybe once a week, so they could share an office. But those are just initial thoughts.
Is there any, is any thought, is any thought about reconfiguring the walls in there, or plan to leave them? Is that pretty much like it is?
If the walls are left the way they are, that would work with the departments that would go there, but that would have to be something we probably have to check on, because it's historic, one take or the other.
Some residential stuff, right?
Yeah, I've had contacts about all the space in the county, potential use of all this building, and I don't know if we've ever discussed that. Is that suitable? Do you think, once it's renovated and cleaned, that it could be a potential for, for any of all the space for someone?
I think there's county offices that need more space, that would take priority. However, there's buildings out at EOC. There is one that is outside of the fence that, and we'll look at Billy, but I know the floor needs to be fixed, and the roof was okay on that building, correct?
The roof is fine. The H-back needs to be worked on, although if it's functioned or not, but there is some floor damage due to a water leak previous.
That's not on this side.
Correct. So depending on what type of office space was needed, there's always that potential that the board could discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to bring up too, Ms. Taylor Laster conducting the meeting gets this past month, and chaired by Mr. Reddick, and we've covered those items. She had listed on that agenda.
And certainly, if they do a one job, or see the trucks and vans all over the county, so I appreciate their efforts. Any other departments? I see ten. Is a project on, on, once the date, 13, have I completed the work, as far as you are concerned?
I compiled, like, water infrastructure, yes. The only final thing I need from them are the ASBILs. The bank underground was the subcontractor that installed all the water lines, but RKMK was the engineer involved with that state project, and they have compiled all the information and the proposals and the surveys, and they're gonna issue the ASBILs to me with specific dimensions and measurements for valves and intersections. That's the only thing I have remaining I need from them. Now it's just dodging bullets. The few places they have to excavate, they finished up the cross lines. That was our last catastrophe. They hit the same line twice, and then after fixing it twice, we still had to go out and relocate it.
Well, I see on your reports, for the last year or so, there's a lot of locating mains, I assume, for the highway project.
They keep having, keep having design deals. They're gonna have to take that back. There is one more place where one, the intersection of 137 and 13 change. Now there's a turnaround just south of that intersection, or south of Small Lake. That water line now is gonna have to be relocated, so they're bidding that out now to tie in from where I just relocated. They're gonna tie in at that joint and go around the turnaround, so no main is to be under asphalt.
Okay. That is, that's, we see that on these reports, it's for the highway project line.
That is correct.
Under ongoing water department, where we have line-up leak repairs, can you quantify a little more, is that?
It's kind of hard to quantify. You're in a 37-year-old system, and we'll fix one leak and another one pops up. So that's just saying that as they occur, they go on the list, and we try to repair them.
How many would you say line leaks are outstanding now?
Right now, I think we have, had seven, two were fixed yesterday, so right now, I think we have five. And when I say minor, that means there is water or saturated soil. A lot, a lot, we have a couple leaks that are saturated soil, but there's no distinct flow. It's just a wet spot. Unfortunately, when you dig down to those, you might have to dig up 20 or 30 foot of water main to find where it's actually leaking, because it follows the main until it finds a leak spot surface. So, I mean, it sounds bad, but a lot of those leaks, you kind of need to wait for it to, to give you distinct flow, so you can pinpoint it, and you're gonna dig about 20 or 30 foot of shoulder of main.
Madam, in regard to the highway project out here, when, when we're called out there to repair, are we subject to new recovery for our time?
I can ask that for you. Yes, sir, I do bill. If I was not properly notified to do a locate on that water main and they hit us, they receive a bill. EB Williams actually paid for the last two repairs, where they hit our mains.
Got an idea of like, just what a dollar amount would be on one of them?
I think that one, those two combined were $1,400 or $1,500.
Okay.
Any contractor that comes in the county and hits a water main, could be service. Anything that was not properly notified to locate, which currently, we're not on 811. That's something that's coming down the pipe for next year. By law, it will have to be on 811. Because of our population and connection, sir, we were given some additional time, and there will be a cost associated that, with that. But that'll put us on with one call system. Currently, when they call 811, they notify who, they are gonna notify, and then they will, then it's the party calling in's responsibility to notify any other conflicting utilities. But yes.
Well, thank you. Going on through the reports. Ms. Baptiste, I believe you're here. As I was looking over yours, you had code enforcement, and I do appreciate the efforts that were being made to, with your department. What happens to repeat offenders? I know we could talk about that, but is...
We're developing a process right now. We're getting with other code enforcement officers across in the area to figure out how to bring these repeat offenders and place, start doing the fines and everything, and figuring out the legal approach on how to get that, that going, so we can give them a little extra incentive not to repeat again.
That's right, because I know that some, on first duty down my way, that is a constant repeat offender.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're gonna start ramping it up. Prior to, we were not doing the fines. So that is one thing, and one option that we're exploring, to start actually doing the fines, and if they do not pay them, what's our recourse after that? Because there's no point in having fines if we don't have the full magnitude of what we can do and what we can't do.
I would, in making a decision like that, Ms. Baptiste, I would recommend, when you decide to start, don't, don't use an act, an, an activity to start, because then you're starting only person. You set a date to start, then you're, everybody's been affected by it, by that side of the caution. Be sure to do that.
Okay. Mr. Wend, do you have anything for emergency?
Nothing other than what was in my report, that's the equation.
Customer services report, anybody have questions? We thank the York Department for their information. I can't believe, unless there's something else, we see the articles of interest and the county calendar. And to remind you tomorrow, that at the community center, they are going to be there for the grant.
November, that's Friday.
Fridays, that's not tomorrow. Friday at nine o'clock.
Yes.
Okay. Going on to old business. And our first is a count on land use planning steering committee appointments. I believe we had that first meeting last week. Ms. Baptiste, would you like to come forward and?
This is Ashley to get the last person appointed. At a previous meeting, the county commissioners decided to do a nine-person board. We have eight currently, see, and we should have only two more applications to build and make that spot that's currently open.
Okay, and, but they were in our packet, if you see, two applications. What is the pleasure for?
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion to set Brian Saunders.
Okay, a motion's been made to appoint Brian Saunders, who is the district conservationist for Gates County.
I'll second that, Madam Chairman.
A motion's been made, and second, in a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Have your full board.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, the NESCO update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm gonna tell you where we are, our soil scientist is finishing up, I hope this week. I was hoping he was gonna finish before this meeting. I did talk to him the other day, and he said, for sure we can get between thirty and thirty-five thousand gallons per day, and probably more. And that will come out in, in the monitoring that we're doing after this. But it does look encouraging, at least it looks much better than the last site. But anyway, things are moving along, and since we have that, and have your permission, we can move forward with the next phase. We're ready to do so, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And just to be clear, that is honeybites?
No, nothing, but this is cotton.
What are we on, honeybites?
The evaluation for honeybites you were sent sometime about three weeks ago? It did not carry as well.
That is the report that you have in your packet? Yes.
The next program?
Holly.
Compassion.
Compassion, and the fact it's been formed, and, and the fact that.
Sprayable?
Yeah. It's in not a good shape, it's, it's gonna crack through.
We're not gonna wait for the session to come forward?
Yes, sir. But this was the grand update on the one, what had, what had proceeded at this point?
Just, just for, because I've, that's what I figured before. What was, what was behind the five command?
It would be, I think he said about, I don't have it here in front of me, I think he said about ten to eighteen inches a year, which is probably in the neighborhood of less than twenty thousand.
Was there any remediation possible to increase that?
Not anything to worry about, but that will suffer from the same problem that you had over behind the commerce park. We've got a lower layer of clay, that once you got down into it, it was gonna, you don't have the same problem.
Sounds like the current landlord was headed down the road, getting for submissions too, possibly?
Absolutely. And I think there was preference to Subservice Strip, and that is not your requirement, but I want for that.
Any additional questions? It's not, thank you, we'll proceed. Okay, moving on to.
Madam Chairman, excuse me for interrupting. Now, we're not just a safety issue, and under old, old business, I had an opportunity to speak to the district engineer about the signs in front of little schools, the caution signs and blinking signs. I don't know if anyone else is struggling with them, but also was talking about putting one in front of high schools as well. I don't know if it.
Certainly, it, it's a lot of backup traffic on one fifty-eight and thirty-seven, with people letting students off and picking them up. And certainly, sometimes those tractor trailers don't slow up.
Commissioner, is that the discussion you've had over the past week, week and a half?
Yes.
Okay, because I had contacted, and they told me that they would, and I told them to contact Deputy Campbell, since he knew exactly where he wanted everything located. So I'm glad that they have followed up, and that it's gonna be taken care of.
And that's probably part of your contact, I think, as much?
I hope so, whatever helps.
Okay, moving to new business, budget amendments, Sandy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We just had two budget amendments this month, and both of these are pertaining to items that were ordered last fiscal year and were not received until this fiscal year, so we need to roll that money forward. Number five, make sure I got my sample number here. Number five is to raw forward money for water inventory that Timmy ordered, I believe, in May. And it didn't come in in June, did not come in until July, so we need to pull that money forward, it's about fourteen thousand dollars. And number six is the same thing for the new voting machines for the elections department. These were ordered back in April or May, and they were not received until July. So the money for both of these was budgeted last year, we just need to pull it out of fund balance to pay for them in this fiscal year.
Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, I'd like a motion that, I'd like to amend it, number five, six, if you approve, that's presented.
Motion's been made, and properly seconded, in a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, thank you. Is this a bike cleaned up, the, what's been ordered prior to end of the year?
I think so.
There may be one or two more that we need to do, is carry, be close. Okay. In your packet, you see the lottery fund application. Remember, the lottery is supposed to be an educational lottery, lottery. I think now we only get seventeen percent of it, anyway. You know, I sneeze, it's seventeen percent. But this is a application for using those funds for, not capital fund, public school capital fund. And this is something that we have to do yearly, correct?
We do it annually, we request the full amount of that debt payment, knowing that we will receive anywhere near that, but they've told us every year to request that amount in case something should happen during the year, and additional funds, we'll be able to draw it down without doing another application. So that's the full debt payment amount, five hundred and eighteen thousand. We are expected to receive, I believe, one hundred and thirteen thousand this year.
And we could always let that gentleman gets very generous, and we'll resell some of that funds to the lottery.
Could happen.
Madam Chairman, I'd like a motion that we authorize this addition of the lottery fund application.
Okay, motion's made. Second, in additional discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, surplus.
There are four computers from DSS that are on the surplus list, and are operational, but they are no longer being used, and they are not needed by any other department. So we're just requesting that they be placed on GOF deals.
Okay, but isn't that some oil things?
Then you will do them all as, okay, we'll do them all, that's gonna make it a whole lot easier. There's also a broken file cabinet, as well as another printer and an auto folder.
And all of GOF deals? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made to place the items on GOF deals. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, a motion's been made, second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. I would like to request that, if not semi-annually, at least annually, if the board can receive a report on the funds that have been received or disposal of surplus items.
And this is also one I want out of your revenue reports that you get each month. There's a line for vehicles, and there's also a line for equipment, like the general fund and the water fund. So, just so you know, you do receive monthly, but we can possibly.
Yeah, but a compile, so we know what we're doing on, on that, understand that breakdown in the.
Absolutely.
Now, is moving on to the commissioners, appointing to the DSS board.
There is no paperwork.
Okay, Ms. Holly?
No. This is a request to reappoint a commissioner of the DSS board, and I believe Mr. Jordan.
Right. The board has two appointees to the DSS board. Mr. John Cora was appointed, and I was appointed, and went for three to five board members. And his appointment expired. Commissioner Felton, who clearly is appointed, it expired, it was between the thirtieth. And so we needed to reappoint him to that board. There is a form that we need to fill out, and we need to get to the Department of Service Director, Ms. Holly. I believe Commissioner Felton has agreed to serve another three years. And this needs to be filled out for him.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to reappoint Commissioner Felton to the DSS board.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made, and properly seconded, in a discussion. All those in favor appointed Commissioner Felton to the DSS board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Billy, you're real list.
Appreciate it. I think the colleagues would need that form, okay? Soon as possible, so we can get it to Subservice Division.
Okay, now we have a formant to the Gates County Rescue Board of Directors. My fault's here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You should have the five applications in front of you. The only thing that I would remind you about is the staggering years, the first time, so that we don't have to replace them in three years.
We're supposed to have five, five, two.
That's in the pile that Melissa had restricted to everyone. There is additional three applications, as well as information about the staggered request that he just mentioned. Five. And these are the current five that you have, correct?
Okay. And what's your recommend of days in a bike stagger?
It really doesn't matter, we can do a year term on, on one or two of them, and then, and it just staggered out. My only request was that Tom Morgan be put in a three-year position, because he's the current chair. That way it would, would give the most stability to the board to finish out the, his terms, three years, and the rest of them, I can do however you all.
Now, this, this board is mandated by, by, the general branch mandated for this?
There is not, there, it was still mine with NCACC's request to show your all's reach into the governance of the contractor.
Were they trying to get the application for the Medicaid reimbursement?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
We need five positions, and we seek five applications. Correct.
Right. And these are people who are currently on that board, the former board?
And they are represented from each of the five districts. Madam Chairman, that's not a motion, but just to give the other gentleman and yourself opportunity to interject something here. I would say that I could see myself easily approving all five applications, and, and giving the gentleman the opportunity to set the terms as he sees fit, what's best for the board. That's what I would be inclined to, to do, and to vote for. Rather than make a motion, I thought I'd wait and let someone else respond.
Just to clarify, this was something, these were appointed by the Board of Directors up until now. EMS Board of Directors have been appointed these people?
They've been elected by the membership.
They've been, I've been telling them. They've been appointed now by the commission.
By the.
And I, Jack, on Jack's side, I'd go ahead and make, make it right now too. Just like the, all you online, say, for one year, the second, two years, and the second, two years, three years, I mean, thirty, forty years.
Yeah, I did see they put the terms on their application. They did? Yeah. And, but Tom's is two, is that three, but three, and I said it the way I said it on the second page, Mr. Morgan said he put two years.
His current serve, but see, that's it.
Oh, how long have you served?
Sir, that's what they did in the past, and this is the totally new organization. I mean, it's same people, but it's a new name.
So going forward too, you won't have any more elections for your board, it'll just be appointments? The only elections will be, there's three members that serve on the board, from inside the membership, and they're elected by the membership. And the board has to have a majority of non-members, and that's these five.
Right. So this is, we're proposing a one, two, and three-year term. Would it be recommend for a one-year term?
I think that Commissioner Ors just started at the top, or Commissioner Felton put it at the end.
I'm just using your fist to get it like that. One, two, and three.
Only thing, only thing about that is, when we vote here, he's mandated to do what we said on the terms. And if he goes to one of these gentlemen here, and he says, I, oh, I only wanted to do one-year term, and we voted him to do two, but for some reason, something happened, and he needs to change from three years to two years to one, they're mandated when we make this motion. But if we give them the opportunity to do what's best for their board, and they can go back and do what's best for their board without coming back to us. That's ridiculous.
I think it's point, I'll take it.
Of course, I, this initial time will not matter.
After today?
Yeah, I mean, I declare it for the first time.
Right, but they're mandated.
Because every term is gonna be a three-year term.
Right, but they are mandated when they leave here.
Yeah.
If we do it that way.
Yes.
Just the point.
What about time term limits, they can serve twenty years?
There was no term, they can reapply, is what we talked about the last time I was before you. Concurrently, at the end of each three-year cycle, all we're trying to do right now today is set that cycle, so that three years from now, we're not talking about five people. We're talking about at most one or two people a year going forward. Now, if you think it works best for you to set those limits, I don't have a real problem with that, but I, I'm thinking that save some of the discretionary decisions that you would have to make, you know, we did it for you. Because I don't see any rhyme or rhythm in how we're gonna do it, other than the fact that, you know, whoever's appointed one year, they would, they would reapply the next year, and it keeps.
And it keeps everyone from having to be done at the same time. So, you know, unless you see a benefit in it, I mean, Commissioner Orin's, Orin's well taken, which would you prefer?
I don't have a preference. I will, if you let us do it, I'm going to go to the board at the meeting at the end of the month and ask them to select their years just at that meeting and go forward. Will be what I.
That would be the uniform way.
And each time you have a reappointment, it's going to come back to the board here and force to approve the reappointment.
Correct. Hopefully, it will be like other committees and boards that you already pointed, it'll just be a matter of posting the application or the, the opening in the newspaper, or however you do it, and taking the application.
All right, I just say that you just need to make us aware, kind of manage the list of what the term limits are, so that we'll have a record. And many times it'll go past, just like we just did the DSS Board, and, you know, we didn't have a plaque and say, hey, it's time for us to do something.
Just tell us when your term starts, what the date is, and each year, I mean, how many people are appointed, like twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen? Give us the date that we need all the four months made by. Okay, entertain a motion.
So moved.
So move what?
No, that we do, may I put this motion before our board, that we accept the nominations from EMS for their board, and that their chairman and board select the terms and limits.
Not, not lengths, but the staggers, when it starts.
Before we asked for a stagger, who wrote this, not signed, but in this letter you gave us, it said that you would like for the board to set the terms. Which board is it?
And that's, that's the EMS Board's way, I read this, is that correct?
As a board.
The last time we met, you all recommended three years. So I guess what I was saying there is just asking you to stagger out, just we extended that first appointment so that it wouldn't come all due at the same time.
Can I make a suggestion that Commissioner?
Yes.
Why don't we include a motion to appoint the five nominees and also allow the board, EMS board, to set a one, two, and three-year term limit for the board members?
Not term limits, it's just the initial term.
Initial.
We stagger the initial term.
Or stagger the initial term for one, two, and three years.
Sounds good. I think Commissioner that may be acceptable.
So we've set the limit and we've given a stagger, all you have to do is put anything.
And that is for the applications as mentioned, and that'd be Miller, Lee, Charles Don, Gregory, Ray Felton, Doug Lilly, and Tom Morgan.
Okay, a motion has been made, do I hear a second?
Second.
A second has been made in discussion. The motion before us is appoint five applicants to the EMS board for three years' terms, but the initial term is going to be staggered at the discretion of the EMS. Is that clear or none?
Have they moved one, two, and three here?
One, two, and three. Okay, all clear on what we're voting? Aye. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we have a proclamation from the daughters of the American Revolution. September, of course, I know all of us know that September seventeenth is the two-hundred-and-twenty-eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States. And they're asking for a proclamation in support of that constitutional amendment.
Madam Chairman, I move that we accept this proclamation on behalf of the daughters of the American Revolution, that National Society. I make that a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in the proper second in discussion. I will say that the Constitution is the oldest living doctrine of the Constitution that's still in existence, still working in this world today, at two-hundred-and-twenty-eight. I think Italy has had fifty constitutions since World War Two. So it's, it is a wonderful doctrine, a living doctrine. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Zoe, Ms. Back, please.
At the August eighteenth meeting of Planning Board, Planning Board was unable to make a decision on the solar farm ordinance update. So the Planning Board is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners give them some additional time to consider this item before it is fully voted on and put into effect. So that's the first request. In addition, they were also presented with information regarding ways for the Planning Board to exist in our ordinance. Currently in our ordinance, we do not have any rules and regulations regarding how the Planning Board makes decisions, what kind of cases go to the Planning Board, term limits, things of that nature. So they were also presented with that information. And again, they were unable to make a decision on that section either. So they're requesting additional time to consider those two items for those zoning ordinance.
Okay, I guess we need to take each one separately. The request is to give them additional time for a solar farm ordinance update to the ordinance. Excuse me?
Update to the zoning ordinance.
And update to the zoning ordinance. Any, what is the pleasure of the board, or any questions?
Madam Chairman, I took a look at this, recognizing this is a new wave of the future. The state, our country, even the world is moving towards green energy. Something that's being pushed from Raleigh. And it's not going away. Recognize that the Planning Board, you need to have time to put together something that's truly workable. I would not like to see us initially take more than ninety days. I would be in favor of doing a ninety-day extension to come up with additional inflation on the solar farm, because, as I said, this is something that is being pushed from top down. It's not something that just popped up, you know, everybody wants to get into business. You've got the state tax incentives that are, that's driving these solar investors. As a matter of fact, right now, we have December thirty-first, all solar farms that have started, if they don't have them operational by December thirty-first, they're going to lose state tax incentives. So I think we need to be on top of our game, try to move as fast as we can, but recognize that we do need time to put together some type of document that's workable and that is good for the citizens as well as for the county. So I would, I would like to see it no more than ninety-day extension initially, see where we come, what happens during the time.
Madam Chairman, I think we have two Planning Board members out here in the audience, if I'd like to ask if either one of those would have any comment.
If you'll come to the podium.
I hadn't planned to speak today, but what I do understand right now, the three states at the top of the list, right, like California, maybe Arizona, it's another western state, North Carolina is number three for some reason. They're doing a lot of pushing, a lot of incentives, which ended in twenty fifteen, I think, federally, it might be incentives as good as twenty sixteen. There seems to be big push in North Carolina right now, or maybe because of the incentives. I'm starting to hear more from kind of people all the time about what happens long-term, when they have to be closed, they, to get too many in certain areas. I think in some cases, what we have, if it's not in the forefront of everything, they've made a real good presentation at Ameris and that sort of fact and everything. Certainly, the technology will change, I'm a lot more concerned by close act, from what I get, the jump value, the closing act, a lot of just a lot of steel and all that. I think some of them consider that if technology comes along, comes along, they may take those plans off and just put new plans on. Certainly, it's something that's going to happen in the future. Some ones out west haven't worked so well, but it's so different from what we have here, I think, some of them have, I think, so it's a direct light, birds and some are real bad again, some of that, some of them have been resold and haven't worked out likely. Thought it would, and that's because of location or what, I don't know, I know. North Carolina is number three hotspot right now. What I'm getting is just a lot of concern long-term, and then what happens locally with taxes, depreciation, how they value, there's concerns about, you know, certainly, industry was doing will probably be okay, but kind of wise, how we may turn out tax-wise, or our culture, community, if you take one thing, it's, you know, if you take farmland, and that takes away the farmers. I'm just getting, these are things I've heard and been asked, and I think right now, there are a lot of people just like to have those questions answered. I think there's been some concern they want to have a joint meeting and have somebody come to speak, that doesn't have any task, it was.
Do you, you think you need more time?
Well, that seems to be the consensus of the board.
To do your due diligence.
I'm sort of on the fence, but the board as a whole, I feel like maybe, and I think there's some talk about having a joint meeting, having somebody come to speak, and having any ties either way, you know, to settle a kind, you know, whatever, it will take up, just a mutual work and everything. But I know North Carolina is sort of a hotspot for that kind of thing. Like I say, people have been at Ameris, they presented a real good program, I thought everything worked, I just said, you know, it would be fine, but I'm starting to pick up comments around, and maybe some level, I'm going to say it too.
I would say that I was recently in a meeting with commissioners for Camden, and they already had had two solar farm ordinances. The first one, and then they had to come back, and that, you know, two months and redo it, because they didn't, you know, things, new information came up. So sometimes we don't have to do that constantly, revise, we need to do it right first time.
You know, that way, they had the, some years ago, you're back in the, you hear, they're hearing things for a while, and all of a sudden have to come back there, and this woman's joined, what they call it, but I think I heard some. I think they're pretty quiet, you follow around, it really didn't take that much land, but I heard some, it's all back very sound, well, whatever, you know. You've been hearing some positive messages back, so that, but everything.
Okay.
So that's pretty much what I have heard of people, start to ask me all the time. Like I said, I'm sort of setting my defenses, just trying to learn what I can right now. I think everything, I think one thing that's happened some places is a company that gets started, and you know, four, five years, it's selling off to somebody else, and that, that, you're concerned. What happens is something that's wrong, we're going to take care of it.
Well, yeah, there's some that are owned by hedge funds, and they're in it for the tax incentives and move on.
Out west, this guy started before the Indian, I don't know, because I think some of those systems are good.
Any?
Anyway, just a lot of unknowns, but.
Any additional comments, questions?
Mr. Sal, would you like to add?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Sal, I see you back like.
Trying to hide. I'm on the planning board, and I feel the study. I asked for one year of moratorium, and the reason for that is, in the scope of things, we only have twenty-four hours to make the decision, because we only need two hours a month. Twenty-four hours is not a long time, we need to get it right, and right the first time, to keep them having to come back. I can't imagine, everybody put moratorium on, and let's be deliberate, get it right. And also, while we deal with that, I think we also need to deal with the wind farms. It's coming. Green energy is coming, and I want to know all about the aspects of environment, a lot of them come back and buy, so I can ask businesses to fit certain towns before. That's just my comments, but, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I too, Madam Chairman, have heard from many of our citizens, in fact, as early as seven-thirty this morning, late seven-thirty this morning, someone was working on the engine beach, one of our citizens. And all of them have, that I have spoken with telephonically, either in person, have asked for and recommended a moratorium. But secondly, they are concerned by the agricultural community, rural community we have in regards to the numbers. So just to bring that forward.
Okay, just to be clear, what we're dealing with now is an extension for the Planning Board to develop an amendment to the tax. We're not dealing with the moratorium on the solar farm just yet.
Yeah.
So these are two separate items right now. You know, with all due respect, with all the concerns, and I too have concerns, I think we, we need to move forward in as expeditions manner as possible, because if we don't, many times we get trampled over by progress. As a matter of fact, you know, we're in the middle just now because we didn't have prompt preparation, you know, solar farms coming. Somehow, the board's cycle is not quite there to be prepared for it, so we are aware we are because of not putting in as much effort as we probably could have. So, Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we do give the Planning Board an extension, I would like to see it at ninety, extension of ninety days, for the preparation of the tax amendment, and that's for this tax amendment, and that only. After the ninety-day extension, we can see where we are and certainly address it again. But my motion would be for a ninety-day extension to bring back to the commissioners a tax amendment for the solar farms.
Madam Chairman, second that motion.
Okay, a motion has been made in second, and remember, this is only by the first recommendation, that the Planning Board be given additional time on solar farms, by submitting items to the commission, because we get the right to them to come back within so many.
They have sixty days.
Sixty days, they give them another ninety days to come back. So be clear, we're doing the first one, not, we're not doing anything about the moratorium at the present time, that would be our next discussion. Okay, any additional discussion?
Madam Chairman, I think the Planning Board's idea, asking for the moratorium, was to have that time to develop their plan, develop board. And I don't, I don't know if they think they can, the ninety days will give them sufficient time to do all the research that they need to do to develop one that won't have to be redone in a month.
Ms. Back, too, with this, these two. The first one, I mean.
Miss Baffert, too, when, with this, these two, the first one, I mean, the first one was put, and then came up about moratorium?
Yes, um, with the, with the request for the extension, they had ran out of their 60 days. These, these items were first presented to the board in July, and by, so they reviewed it at the July meeting, and then at the August meeting, so at the end of the August meeting, their 60 days were up. So normally, what I would do is I would just bring it to the county commissioners without planning board recommendation. Now, we do have a, if you decide not to give the extension, we would go ahead on and advertise it, and it would be decided at the September, the second meeting in September. But the, the planning board did request that they have more time to consider deciding, because it is a lot of information to take in, even though we are primarily tasked with dealing with what the land impact would be for the development, there are a lot of issues on the side that may play a part, that may not, we just don't know. We have a lot of things that we need to consider when we're looking at this, because just saying that we want the buffer to be this big, we want it to be in this area, is, is not as simple as just like writing in black and white and saying, this is it, this is how this development is going to be, because there are a lot outside factors that we don't know, and we may never know, but we need more time to be able to explore and figure out what's relevant and what's not.
The planning board and the planning director, did y'all come up with a time that you thought was reasonable?
Um, I feel that, I, I don't, I really don't have a problem with the 90 day extension as long as we would have an option, if we, at the, at the end of those 90 days, the planning board was not ready to proceed, if we could come back and get another extension, because that kind of leads into the next item, the moratorium. During the meeting, the planning board request, asking to present to you guys a request to do a year moratorium. Now, even though we do a year moratorium, if we feel, or we come up with a document that's presentable, that we feel comfortable with, we could, we could go ahead on and cancel the moratorium before a year. I just need a, you know, a significant time, because according to law, we have to give a specific time. So, I feel 90 days may be fine, as long as we have a chance to come back and ask for another extension, if in that time, we do not have a document that we're comfortable with.
I ask this question, during this time, this 90 days or the year, if someone comes in, wants to construct or do a solar farm, that, what happens?
We won't be able to take the application. If the, if the extension is given, and the moratorium is not approved, then I have to take the application. If the extension is given and the moratorium is approved, then I cannot take the application. The moratorium stops any applicant, takes me, stops me from taking any application.
Okay, if we don't do the moratorium, but they gave the extension, and you accept the application.
They're all under the.
It proceeds under the old rules?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I, I was hoping that we wouldn't put this together, but it seemed like we've gone there, now that we've gone there, I guess we need to discuss it. The way the, the moratorium is requested is to have a one more, one year moratorium on developing solar, solar farms.
Yes.
What that tells me is that the solar farms, we've got four that I'm aware of, we've got one on 158, I've gone near place, we've got one, another one on 158, near St. John's Church, I understand there's one on Bob's Road, there's one on 158 in Europe. These are all developing solar farms. As I said before, the state has provided tax incentives, they're under the gun, so to speak, to get these things operational by December 31st. If we put a moratorium on those particular solar farms, it stops their work.
No, sir.
No.
The ones that's already approved, they're, they're already exempt, they're exempt from, they were, they were approved under the old standards, under what we have currently. So they will continue and proceed under what we have, we, we cannot stop those, because we have already gave them a vested right to do that development. So those four can proceed without any problem, under the new standards, they can apply for whatever, they can get whatever, they are fine. The moratorium, and the, the moratorium just deals with new applications, it don't even, the moratorium would not even come into effect with any applications that I have current.
All right, let me, let me go here. I see that you attended a symposium.
Yes.
Solar farm symposium, and hopefully there was good information there.
It was a lot of good information.
Okay. I understand that the, the state, North Carolina, I don't know whether that's driven from Congress or what, but there's supposed to be a 12.5% of all the energy, of electrical energy being generated through green energy by the year 2021, I believe. Now, are you aware, is that broken down anyway, where, you know, it would put a burden on the counties and other, if, if we limit, or put a moratorium on solar farms, and, you know, we've got four, but, you know, down the road, we've, we've, withheld applications or held up. My point is, is that, is there a possibility that we wouldn't be generating our fair share, as far as producing energy to serve our, our county, you know? You know, we don't want to serve the whole state, we don't want to serve, provide enough energy for, for hurt with equipment without them having to get in the game, but I mean, there ought to be some kind of way, if, you know, we can quantify as what would be necessary, some kind of letter for Dix County, as far as having solar farms, if you follow what I'm saying.
I don't think it's going to be, it's, that rate is statewide, it's not going to be designated for county to generate, because, you know.
Yeah, I don't believe that, East County has pulled it, they're supposed to be.
Yeah, it's not.
If I may, if I may, I was going to say my comments for the moratorium. First of all, let me go ahead and say, that we've got these two things together, we should have already voted on one, definitely, but, excuse, I'm sorry. I cannot believe that there was a unanimous vote on moratorium, I cannot believe that. So I'm going to ask you some questions. Understand, now that you went to a symposium on solar farms.
Yes.
And, did they tell you how much noise they make?
No, that was.
Because they made no noise. Did they tell you, did it make your hair fall out?
No.
Okay. You know, it, it amazes me that we feel so badly about solar farms, it amazes me. And from the agricultural standpoint, if I'm a farmer, I don't have to put a solar farm on my farm. Now, if I'm a farmer that rents a piece of property, then he, he has to understand that the person that he's renting from has a better situation, a better opportunity, and is not making anybody's hair fall out, and is not making any noise, then I, I think we've got some great farmers in the county, and they should work with the landowners that they rent from. I, I just do not understand, you know, if we, if our rules are like this, if our rules are that it's set back from the highway, that if there's a required buffer of a specific tree, or two trees, or two bushes, and it's fenced, when I ride by at 45 or 55 miles an hour, I'm not even going to notice that, I'm not even going to notice that. So how is it bothering me, that, that the best and sole argument that I've heard, or that I could come up with, would be the impact on wildlife? Now, that, that's legitimate, I think that's legitimate, but if they're not huge, if they're not huge, that's not an issue anyway. And you may find, I, I live near a big farm, and they'll, you know, that, that landowner doesn't allow hunting anyway, 100 and some acres, so he's not allowed hunting anyway. But, but I, I, it amazes me that you got a unanimous vote for one year moratorium. I mean, you're sending a signal that Joe Farmer's sitting over here, or Joe Landowner's sitting over here, he should be outraged that you're telling him that for a year, that he can't take a contract on his property, and, and that opportunity may dry up, because maybe the time will run out on the state and federal tax incentives, and then that landowner that's sitting over here says, the county made me miss my opportunity to do what I wanted to with my land. I, I, I disagree 100%, and I was waiting, but for the solar farm issue to come up independently, but I wanted my cohorts up here, colleagues, to know, I thought it's best for them to know now, how I feel about the thing that's coming up next. And, and I'm amazed, and if we had the opportunity, Madam Chairman, County Manager, to add this to our agenda in closed session, I've got a lot more to say about it, today, if we have that opportunity.
I think, I'm being respectful, I think there's a lot more to solar farms than what we currently know concerning, we don't have anything, either by setbacks, we don't have, there are so many things that we don't have, it's carte blanche, so to speak, in Dix County. We certainly need rules and regulations on that, I think you, well, also the tax implications concerning that, there are just a lot of unanswered questions, and we have all, you know, people are telling, it's not a job rig here. It, if you will, will do your, when we went out to Mrs. Deasley, I believe they said they would have one person come around to check and make sure everything was running and right, that that person would be not just for that your farm, but it would serve, he would go around and serve hours, and they might have somebody to cut the weeds that the sheep didn't cut, didn't eat. So it's not a job rig for the county. The tax, and we need to talk to Mrs. Lane about the tax, but I understand from the sessions I have with all county commissioners, they thought that, once again, that it's not going to be a very favorable picture on the tax issue, like the equipment and the way the rules have been written. But I think there's just a lot more that we need to know than impacts on this, and also, then, what happens when they are no longer in use, the person's going to be left with, how is that going to be, or if they don't finish out that contract, and, so I think there's a lot of questions to ask. I, I think we do need to do, for the planning board, do they do villagers? I do think we need to try to make informed decisions for, on the county's part, and to help educate not only the commissioners, but the planning board, but citizens as a whole, about the pluses and minuses of solar, and I think there are minuses, and I think there are pluses.
I can remind you, there is a motion for, for the amendment.
Yes, let's go, I'm sorry, we did.
We're just going to have a discussion right now. Commissioner Chair, you know, we are at a point where we recognize that, yes, there's a lot of things that we need to do as far as learning more about them, but in doing due diligence, timeliness is also something that we have to take into consideration. I know the planning board meets once a month, usually they don't meet for one hour, but when you have things of this nature, sometimes you may have to put in a little bit more time. We have a planning director who prepares these documents and does research, and, you know, you'll always have to come into office more to, to review what's been presented, or they come in, so that when you do come in, you can make an informed decision. But we, we as a county, I don't feel we can get behind the eight ball and just stay way up, I, I don't know enough about it, and we got to find out about it. When I got my package, I didn't know anything about how to address this, but I had to go and just dig, and go and go on the internet, and get some information, and learn a little bit about what's going on with the solar farm, what's driving it. This is being driven, as I pointed out earlier, this is driven from top down, we are in an energy crisis. The, you know, our traditional energy, nuclear plants, we've got a nuclear plant over in Surrey, we're trying to get away from the nuclear energy. If something happened to that nuclear plant over in Surrey, this whole area here is affected, we're in one of the affected zones, and most of you all know about Chernobyl in Russia, so we're, this is something that is not one way, we, I don't feel we need to drag our feet in sand, like, yeah, you know, I know we need more time, but to just give us a year, I think that's a little bit much.
Okay, let's try to get back on track, and we'll do the solar farm amendment, which has asked for additional time, we'll, and we'll get back off the table.
Madam Chairman, just one more, I'll just ask, like, our chairman, Mr. George, if he would be willing to make that 90 days to six months.
I, I would stay at 90 days, and I think if we come back, if they need more after the 90 days, or this puts a time limit where that, you know, we can try to make 90 days, and not if we can rest again, if we need additional time.
I was thinking of giving that limit, and then they come up in 60 days and have to rest, and then, if they have to make 120, they don't have to come back again, if they don't have one more day.
I, I'm on a committed time of living, if you give me 120 days, I'm going to commute back, if you give me nine, I'll try to meet it, but I'd like to, I'd like to keep the motion as good as it can.
A motion has been made to give the planning board 90 additional days to come up with the solar farm amendment, is there a second to that? Just a second. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, everyone's heard the motion that is on the floor, all those in favor of giving the planning board 90 more days to come up with a solar farm amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No, just because, just because I think they need more time.
I think they need more time, too. Okay, so that is voted down for each to.
Who is, who isn't?
I do. Ready?
You're ready.
Okay, do I have a non-motion?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, follow up on discussion by Commissioner Felton, that give them six months, however, if they can complete it in 60 days or 90 days, that way at least it gives them additional time.
Okay, motion's been made, is do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, do I hear any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of 120 days?
180.
180, excuse me, 180 days, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, kind of passes. Okay, moving to the second amendment, or recommendation about moratorium. Okay, Board of Commissioners, I was lying on the planning board, additional time to consider this item, submit my recommendation for.
But, but, really, really good question. For the planning board portion, we added into designing our bills, right now, we don't have any information about term limits or the composure of the planning board, or what cases you decide, so I prepare something to be written in. So I prepare something to be written into the ordinance. But again, we were unable to make a decision, so they will request an additional time with that as well.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misread that. Okay, you've heard the recommendation from the planning board to be given additional time for consideration about their time from term limits and addition.
I'm moved to accept the planning board's recommendation for more time to develop a workable plan.
Okay, motion's been made, do I hear a second?
I guess no discussion still.
I'm waiting for a second. I second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made, now we'll have the discussion.
All right, this is for additional information to the zoning ordinance regards to the organization and operation of planning.
Yes.
That's the only thing we can do here.
Yes.
Okay.
And it is already in the zoning board of adjustment. Term limits are already in there, and I believe to make up for it for the board of adjustment, but it does not address the planning board.
Yes.
Well, one of my concerns was Ms. Baptiste's comment about that they don't have anything in their documentation about what will and won't come before. Did I hear that? About what types of things will come before you?
Well, the, I apologize, let me clarify. They do have in the ordinance that the planning board handles certain items, but not how those items are handled in terms of the steps that are taken. Because in all ordinance, we do have detailed steps that describe how a special use permit goes from application to finalization. For the planning board items such as rezonings, we don't have those steps. So it's just a matter of, it's just items to clarify what we're currently doing, but to formalize it into a writing.
Is that a protocol for...
Yes.
So I remember, as, subdivisions or...
Yes.
The information's in the ordinance, but it's not put, not by laws.
For some aspects, for the rezoning, it just says that application needs to be submitted for the planning board to review, but then that's about it. It doesn't say it needs to have, we need to have this information, we need this, this, and this. And also, it goes from planning board to board of county commissioners, the site being, put a sign at the site, things of that nature. It's just to clarify the things that we're already doing. Because, I mean, we're doing them based on general statute, but we don't have it in our ordinance. So it's just to formalize the steps that we're already doing.
Madam Chairman, in the line of discussion, I'd ask Commissioner Felton if he wanted to put a time on his, he didn't say a particular length of time.
Yeah, I didn't know the purpose, I believe it... What could y'all, what would you recommend to someone from the planning board or the director?
I feel comfortable with 90 days as well.
Yeah, that's fine, I'll have it, might as well have it to develop a plan.
Okay, is that the board person who's second, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so before, we have a motion for a recommendation from the planning board that Commissioner Felton has brought forward to give the planning board 90 days to come up with a clarification organization for the planning board. Any additional discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so you have... Okay, the third item is the planning board has asked the Board of Commissioners to amend the solar farm section and to give a moratorium for one year. It was recommended by the planning board unanimously. Okay, Ms. Baptiste, you have anything to add?
Well, this is to clarify how, really, I brought it to you guys around because for moratorium, moratorium is pretty much handled as a tax amendment. We do have to advertise this in the newspaper. We need, if we're going to do it, it needs to be for the time that you guys feel comfortable doing. The recommendation from the planning board was for a year. We need to have specific information in terms of why we feel the moratorium is needed, and time limit, and a couple of other items that need to be addressed. But this is to see so that we advertise it correctly. This isn't a vote to grant the moratorium, but to have a discussion about if you want to do it, the time limit, and what's the parameters, so that we advertise it correctly.
Okay, we've heard from Mrs. Simon on that issue. Mr. Ethan, do you have anything to add to that?
I would like to say that with the moratorium, I'm stupid. I need to know, I want to get educated. I want people coming here and educating me on what's going on. Tell me about your solar farm, I want to hear both sides of it before I can make an informed decision on what to do. That's my main concern. I don't want to jump in with something, they come back six months, and I have to redo it.
Okay. Any discussion? Comments, questions?
First of all, going to ask for a year of moratorium. Obviously, you feel that you probably need that much time to, it's been pointed out to get educated, learn all about it. But the other part to it is, what are we doing in that time, that timeframe? Is that something that, you know, we can take all the time we want, how does that affect those who want to sell their property? Those who want to invest in the county? How is it going to affect the county as far as providing green energy and so forth? So I just think that a year is something that was pulled out there that, you know, it sounds like sufficient time. I think it's too much. I think that, you know, if we could do possibly 90 days, if we did something on moratorium in 90 days, it would give us enough time to try to get someone in here to find out those things that we don't know. But it wouldn't put us in a position where, you know, we're just delaying without justification. I just don't see it right now as a blank year as being something that we can put this moratorium on. I know that we said earlier that all projects that are in, that are already have approved applications, it's not going to affect them. It's not going to affect them. Why can't we take applications? And if we take them, they'll know it's going to be under the new ordinance. Because right now, we don't have anything in place that says that that solar farm that's on 158 just right down the road from Second Eye Church, what kind of buffers, what kind of fencing, what kind of... We don't have anything for that right now.
Yeah, we do, in our current ordinance, we do have buffering and fencing requirements to a limited degree.
It's very limited.
Yes.
Because the ice is behind, there's residents, and the fence is not fitted to be back.
Right.
Yeah, it's right there.
So are they going to put shrubbery trees or whatever between there?
We don't have ordinance for that.
Currently.
No.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying. You know, we've already opened Pandora's Box, as you will.
That's why.
To the point. So stopping applications right now, you know, that's not going to help us where we are. We're already there. If we're going to put a moratorium on it, it may be not an issue permit for 90 days until we get the ordinance or until we get an ordinance in place.
See, even if we did it on just the permits, it wouldn't affect the ones that's already approved. Once we approve it and give it that special use permit approval from the board of adjustment, the applicant is granted, was called a vested right. On the general statute, a vested right is as good as writing a check and saying, "You're done." We can move forward underneath standards.
Yeah, but my point is, is that if we implement this moratorium, if someone comes in and wants to apply for a solar farm, we're going to tell them, "You can't put application in." Basically, we told the landowner, you know, "No, you can't make the deal. If you make the deal, you're..." We stopped everything. Our thing is, we're trying to get an ordinance in place that protects the citizens of this county. That's what we want. We want to protect all parties involved. So if we can get an ordinance in place, why can't we take applications, let them know that that's pending the implementation approval of our ordinance, rather than saying, "No, you can't move forward on selling your land if you want to."
Because under, when you take the application, there's an expectation of due process. There's an expectation, and under, I'll have to check for sure, but under general statute, there may be a limit that, once you take the application, you have 30 days to process or some due process period. If we take it and we hold it for 90 days, and then if something happens and it's another 60 days, then we're not doing due process, and we can open up ourselves to a lot of liability.
Let me come here, and I'm going to, I'm going to let the board speak a little bit. I pulled up, Hurford County had this same issue back in February of 2015. It was in the Hurford County News, so I pulled it up from the archives on the internet. And Hurford County recommended a moratorium by the economic development director to implement it for, we want it 90 days. And we wanted to have time to establish guidelines for conditional use, special use permits, setbacks, visibility, and decommissioning. And the board commissioners at that time, they voted 4 to 0 not to approve the moratorium. And it says that our concern would be if there is a 90-day period of determining what the ordinance is, it would push us back the date at which we want to start our projects here out so far into the year where we are at risk of completing projects by year end. This was one of the rationale for, as you pointed out, projects that are in place is not affected by that.
Right.
But basically, our vote Thursday night appears the commissioners agreed with the quiet of killing bird as well as other solar projects currently under development in the county. However, the board did agree as part of a motion to deny the moratorium to have Hurford County Planning Board to continue to review and research possible future restrictions and regulations applicable to solar farm projects, which have not applied for permits or have not expended substantial sums based on past interpretation at the time of enactment of any amendments to the zoning ordinance. So now, just to call upon it, implement a moratorium, just give me a year, and it's something that, you know, it just really doesn't sit well when we know that what we're trying to get to, we're trying to get to in the zoning ordinance that protects what we're concerned about. And I don't see why that should take so much time as a year to do that. I think in a 90-day period, if we want to implement a moratorium, certainly, a 90-day period. And also, there should be some provisions where landowners are not stopped from moving their property if they want to do that in that particular time, and have some assurance that we're going to be coming up with something this level.
Madam Chairman? I spoke with a Dominion Power representative about two weeks ago, and specifically asked him about solar panels. And this guy, I don't know if he's confined to Hurford County or not. I think it's a little bit broader, but all, just in North Carolina. And he said, our conversation was not in great detail, but I gathered from the conversation we had, you know, tell me what you, tell me what I needed. He didn't share anything, any concern whatsoever. Dominion Power is a friendly company. Roanoke Electric, their main office is in Hurford County. They have solar panels. They build them within 200 yards of their office, where the present of the company sits. They probably did that as a shuttle, as much as anything, because they have property behind them where they could have put it back there, or they could have put it anywhere for that matter. But they did that. They are a very citizen-friendly company as well. I really, you know, I don't see, I don't see the negative. A year is way too long. Way, way too long to make decisions about this. Because there's a track record, you know, there's a track record. You can call the people that have had solar farms out there for 10 years and ask them, you know, have you had any issues in a 10-year period? And pay attention to what they say. I don't, I don't see the negatives. Again, I lean toward the landowner, and I don't want to hurt the landowner. The state of North Carolina currently is offering a tax incentive for this. They have NC State right there beside them. They can call anybody in the United States and say, "Are we doing harm to our citizens?" They haven't done that. They've gone the opposite direction and said, "Wow, we think it's such a good thing, but we're going to offer an incentive for it to come to North Carolina." That's a pretty strong track record right there. Now, I really appreciate our board wanting to turn over every leaf. But I want to remind us that we do things after Pandora's Box is open. And I'll lean to the Congress part. We approved that before we had restrictions and ordinance in place. I've never been happy about that. This board wishes we had all of that. But we didn't do anything in advance. We didn't plan for the first business development to come to the county. We didn't plan for that. And we don't have the documentation, and it's not your fault, it's bad too. It's nobody's fault, it's on their board. But it is a track record, a history document that we keep repeating. Okay, so I appreciate you doing this, but at the same time, here's, we wait until an opportunity presents itself, and then we say, "Oh, we better do something about that. We better address that." There should be a significant, significant buffer established around this, so that it's not an eyesore. It should not be close to anybody's residence, even though it's not going to bother them. We don't even need to have the appearance that we don't care about the neighbor that's next door to that solar farm. I mean, let's, let's, let's protect our citizens. But let's don't do it after the fact. You know, why I'm sitting here thinking this, that we approved four solar farms? What were we doing? And now we don't want to know them, what were we doing? We must have made some terrible mistakes. If we allowed four solar farms to come in here, and then all of a sudden we flipped the light switch, slammed the door in the company's face, what did we do wrong? What we did wrong is we didn't prepare before the opportunity arose. So I will remind the board that, uh, Chair, Commissioner Jordan made a motion. I sat in it for sixty days. For ninety days, thank you, for ninety days. It did not pass. Commissioner Felton made a motion, six months, a hundred and eighty days, seconded by Commissioner Freeman, and it passed manlessly. Neither one of us voted against it. I want to remind you of that. The state is not making a mistake. They're not putting us in jeopardy by allowing solar farms to come. I'm certainly in favor of the hundred and eighty days. I hope we get an answer before the end of the year. There's plenty with the internet, with phone calls, with asking an expert to come talk to this, to your board, or a joint board, I think that might have been mentioned by Billy or, um, Mr. Eastnapp there. We could certainly do that, and we can do that properly. I'm sure we can get that done. I hope we don't send a message that says, don't come to Gates County technology, don't come to Gates County new businesses. And, and when we, and then when you say, you're talking about running in the paper, you know, that we're gonna announce to the world that we don't want business. And I know that's not true, but, um, I hope we don't have a one-year moratorium. I hope we don't have a moratorium at all. Thank you, Chairman.
Any additional comments?
I'll just say that numerous counties have done the due diligence already or are working in the process of doing due diligence. It's not that we're doing something strange or unusual, um, you know. Solar energy has kind of just popped up on the radar screen in the last, I know there's been one in Herbert County for a while, but really the push for new ones has just been recent. And that is because of the tax incentives that have been granted, and it has been somewhat political, um, issue of pushing these tax incentives if you keep an eye on the General Assembly. And, um, you know, we, when politics gets a box and allows the things, it kind of changes the ballgame as well. So, um, what is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I would make a notion that, uh, we deny a moratorium, but that all applications that are taken for solar farms will come under, uh, the requirements of the new ordinance that's due in a hundred and twenty-eight, a hundred and eighty days.
Can, is that legal? I don't think we can do that.
Well, what would be unlawful about it? If we, if we're, we're saying that any new applications that are being taken will come under the new ordinance, we're developing new ordinance now. All the other solar farms that are in, in progress, they're not covered. But any new applications taken after today, you would come under the new ordinance that we ended up developing, we've given the planning board a hundred and eighty days. I see nothing illegal about that. Uh, we don't have our attorney in here, but, uh, certainly we are, we're doing due diligence to get it in place. And, uh, they would be obligated if, if, if they did not want to take a chance on it, they would have to wait until that time, but it certainly puts in place the fact that they're gonna have restrictions, they're gonna have it adhered to, and, uh, and they'll just have to be mindful of that. I, 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 I see nothing illegal with it.
Mr. Atchies, you have a comment?
That, that, um, that's not something that can, because, for example, I've gone through the office. There have been sign ordinances, landscape ordinances, these different ordinances that have been presented to the board that were never approved. If we say, you know, you're going under the new standards, they may never be approved. It may take you guys another, um, two, three meetings to get, to get it where you feel comfortable to approve it. So then, instead of a hundred and eighty days, it turns into another three hundred and sixty days or whatever. I mean, it's just not, that's just not feasible thing. You can't, you can't place somebody under expectations that are not approved. Because what I have written, y'all might, y'all might not like it at all. I mean, that's just, I hope you do, but I mean, it's, it, that's just the way it is. I mean, we can't accept that petition and say to put it under the new ordinance that's not even an ordinance. It has to be legalized, it has to be formally adopted before it can be used.
I don't think you make anything retroactive, if you take a.
No.
Chairman, might I ask, if I heard correctly, that there are some that have already been approved?
Yes.
Is there a number that you could give us on the number that have been approved?
I believe we have four that's already approved.
There are ones that exist, are there?
And we have one that's in, that's been tabled by the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, so the one that's tabled is the one on Bostley Road, correct?
Yes.
What is the four? I don't know, I understand the fourth one then.
That's the third, that's, well, we got three of them, possibly there's four of them, if that's correct.
But she just said there was four, and.
I believe there's four, I'm not, I'm not sure. Because I don't have the exact approval.
So the Bostie Road has not been issued, they, they've only committed, is that correct? Okay, there, there we go. That's where we're right back to, uh, where, I don't know if they can do it, like, whether they can put it up to, like, December thirty-first. But they put in application for, we have not issued this only permit. And, uh, you know, that could have, in fact, whether or not they, they qualify for a tax incentive or not. Of course, we don't have anyone here to, to speak to that.
And they're the ones that are, they're delaying their own project. They're not delaying because of us. They're delaying their own project.
Because of wetlands.
Yeah. They're, they have requested a delay in their project. They're not delaying because of anything that the, um, planning department or the Board of Adjustment has done. We have had meetings, we have said it in the newspaper and everything to hear the case. They are the ones that had, they called us and requested and said, we have additional concerns that we need to look into, we need to have it tabled. And the Board of Adjustment granted them a continuance. So it's nothing, it's not because of the county.
Would you, just as a, as a matter of clarification, would you, with what, what they've done so far in their process, just leading to the Bostie situation, if we come up with an order, ordinance at this point, are they gonna be bound by the new ordinance, by the old ordinance?
Yes, but with a special use permit through the Board of Adjustment, they do have the right to put additional conditions and uses, uh, yes, on the application being approved. So you do have that right to say, okay, we're approving it, you're under the old ordinance, but we also approve these other additional conditions on your project.
Very good, glad to hear that.
And even if we don't have the ordinance, they still have that right. They can still add additional conditions to their special use permit.
Chief, would you make your board, I want to tell you how this person feels. I want people to never know you're one of them. And I'm, I'm speaking about Bostie, any of them. I don't want anybody to ever see them, and to the point that that's the buffer that I'm setting one thing.
Okay, did we, uh, have a motion?
Um, I'd like to speak to, real quick, we have a motion, I think. Mr. Jordan, is there a motion?
Yeah, I do make motions.
I am a little concerned about what the law would say, about what you put forward. To the point that if our attorney was here, I don't think he would even have to do research on that. I don't think he would feel comfortable asking into that infiled, uh, restriction.
I just don't think, uh, you, that's, that's post facto is in that constitution that we just go and celebrate in a few more days, and you can't make up a long retroact. They always had to be in the future.
Not saying that you're wrong, but I, but I'm not sure we.
Well, the other concern that I have is, is that, you know, if we put this moratorium in place, you know, what kind of liability we placing ourselves, you know, we're basically shutting down the opportunities to sell a property. I think, I think it'd leave the council gods anyway.
Well, I believe, if I may interrupt, I believe there are all counties in North Carolina that have done a moratorium. I believe it's Rutherford.
Oh, there are several that have, I mean, more than, I mean, it's been done for various reasons.
Seven, I mean, all counties have done it and are in a moratorium in current town. Can you, that's involved.
Well, you know, certainly I understand that, but, but my point is, is that, uh, you know, we gotta say, well, we can't legally do this because we don't have the ordinance in place. You know, that's, that's, uh, an opinion that we have right now. It's not, uh, something that's, that's established by legal professional. I'll, I'll withdraw that motion. And I'll allow the board to see what you want to put forward, and I'll go forward.
Okay.
All right, Natalie, can, may I ask somebody?
Yes.
We have a recommendation here on moratorium, of one year. That's a recommendation. If I were to request a moratorium for a different period of time, do we have to address it?
You would have to vote on it, but this is.
We have, we have, we have to remember.
You would have to vote on yours, you need to, you need to make, take some action on this recommendation. And really, just as, for me to make sure I understood as well, it's really to be able to advertise in the newspaper.
Yes, see, the planning board is just making a recommendation. You guys are the ones that actually set the limits and the parameters behind the moratorium. Then I go ahead on and advertise it to make sure that it's accurately representing what we're going, because we're gonna have to have a public hearing on this. So we have to make sure that what we are having a public hearing on is accurately represented in the newspaper.
But you're not gonna advertise anything before we approve what you're gonna advertise. And so this has to come, if it comes, this has to come first before we need to talk about advertising.
Right.
If you can't go out and advertise something that the board disagrees with.
Right, that's, that's why it's here.
And they meet on September the twenty-second. The planning board does.
No.
On, so, yeah. September twenty-first is when we meet. Yes, but that, the third, first, our third duty is the week before that.
It's the week. Yeah, it's the eighteenth, I think, no, I'm sorry, it's the fifteenth, I'm saying the other.
Yeah, it's the.
Well, um, if I may speak to the board, um, I hope, I hope that we can have some common ground, uh, I hope that we can have some common ground on something short of that year of moratorium, if we have a moratorium at all. I'm not in favor of a moratorium, but, uh, I'm not making all these comments just to be, you know, get different. I feel strongly about what I'm saying, and I think you need to, to hear that. But I don't want, I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion for less, but I don't want to do that and, and not do the right thing about this. Certainly, if I make a suggestion and it passes, that's the reason that I was asking the question, do we, how do we address that?
And they meet on the fifteenth, I apologize, it's the week before our meeting.
Well, Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the moratorium until a new ordinance, solar farm ordinance is adopted for, with a time period limited to not exceed one year. But whenever the, whenever the ordinance is adopted, then the moratorium will end.
Discussion.
We have discussion. Earlier ago, we had a house session.
So I'll say that.
Can you advertise on that?
That is not to exceed one year.
It's the same thing as having one year moratorium. I mean, because, because if they come back to us in three weeks, just, just to say three weeks, the moratorium's over. So that, that's really a, it's really, gentlemen, is saying the same thing. Moratorium ends when we get the ordinance. If I, if I could just.
And if it goes over a year, then you back to original. I think it says not to exceed a year, or it's, if we revert back, if we don't do anything within a year, then the old rules go in the past.
The thing is weird. We're telling the wrong people, because they're gonna be making decisions and they won't take as long to make decisions as a year. They'll go ahead and make their decision that they're going to South Carolina, or they're going, they're going to Virginia, or they're going to another county, because they're not gonna say, well, let's wait and see what they do and wait a year.
Okay, motion is on the floor, it's been properly seconded, there's any additional discussion?
I think it needs to be time-specific to say a certain number. I don't think it can say limited to not exceed one year. I'm not sure.
We're gonna ask them for a year. And the motion says not to exceed a year. Well, it couldn't exceed a year anyway.
It's the, it's the same thing, it's just said differently. Because the moratorium ends once we, or, once we get an ordinance by a board pass.
And I don't mean to put words in Commissioner Felton's mouth, but I think that the point is, is that, uh, we want to make sure that the moratorium can be lifted. If we say it's a year, it's a year. And if, and if we put that not to exceed, then that allows us to lift it in ninety days if we get an ordinance. I believe that's what I intended. And so, that's the purpose of that, of that caviarary as well, is that it, uh, gives the board, they're not putting into law that you gotta wait a year. One year is it, but.
Well, even if you say it just like for one year, you do have the option of lifting it early regardless. I mean, I can, I.
It's a perception of what the investor.
I mean, we can, I'll check with, I'll check with the attorney, just. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, we've given you a hundred and eighty days to come up with a tax amendment. When that tax amendment comes up, hopefully we can lift this ordinance, I mean, it's.
I would be much more in favor of a ninety day moratorium rather than a year. That, that'd be four, and I realize that this is a discussion, unless we have a motion and a second. I would be more in favor, the ninety days takes us. The 90 days takes us to the end of November. So it helps the investor and the landowner folks, that person that's a citizen of Gates County. It gives them knowledge of what's going to transpire before the tax incentive goes away, which is what is driving them to give me. So we're not hindering the landowner. And we're not hindering the sole farm. And, uh, and that's much more, it shows, now that sends a message to the public that we're doing our due diligence and we're not hindering the company or the landowner.
I would, I would certainly be in favor of a 90-day. That way you would, uh, allow the planning board to try to come up with something, see where they are at the end of the 90 days. And hopefully, uh, they'll have something to us by the end of the 180 days.
Okay, so we've given 180 days to come up with an ordinance that's going to a moratorium, or you were saying 90 days. Somehow, I would think they should be saying, maybe that's just me, but, you know, you give some-
I wish they would. I don't wish they were 180, that's too high.
But, um, we've already done 180 days, so, um... Wouldn't the-
I feel that 180 days.
I'll, I'll amend mine just to remove that caveat of one year and give six months. Six months moratorium.
And as you, as Mr. T.C. said, if they come back within 90 days, we can lift it at that time.
We can do it, yeah.
Is that, Mr. Commissioner Freeman, would you be willing to, the second 180 days? Okay, the motion before us is establish a moratorium for 180 days, um, to come up with a, uh, for sole farms, um-
A moratorium for sole farms?
A moratorium for sole farms for 180 days. And with the understanding that we have an ordinance prior to that, that the moratorium can be lifted soon.
Uh, true. New applications.
New, well, any applications. I mean, in additional applications. I mean, a moratorium is, uh, stops everything.
Well, that's the point, it doesn't stop what's out there. We already talked about it.
I mean, that's not the Bostel one, but I, you don't have any all right in, I mean, once this is in effect, unless somebody gets something in between now and then.
This is for new application.
Yeah, I mean, unless somebody submits application between now and our next meeting on the 21st, then we'll have to take it.
Let me ask you a question. Because we're asking for clarification. Has anybody, by phone or physically, asked for an application?
No.
That hasn't returned?
No.
Okay, good, all right.
Okay, are we clear that we're voting for a-
Where is, is this a new application?
Yes, I mean, okay, everybody understands. We establish a moratorium for 180 days on sole farms, on new applications for sole farms. And as soon, if the moratorium will be lifted, as soon as the ordinance is, uh, approved. As soon as the new sole ordinance is approved.
All right, I meant it to be, it's only more than just for sole farms.
Okay, is everybody clear? Okay, all those who are for this, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, it's five, it's five zero. I'm getting confused, more confused. Okay, the last item on the new business is about the concrete meals. And for those of you who don't understand that, that is meals that are provided at the community center. There's nothing else that are hand-delivered by meals on wheels. And that, due to budget limitations, they sometimes do not have enough meals to feed those who are, by our, I think there's been a couple locations where, that we didn't have enough for the store.
Chairman, I'd like to address that. At one of our last meetings, uh, we were informed that the Alamo Commission was limiting the number of people that could be served at our concrete site. We recognize those people are being served are elderly of the county, uh, that come for the, uh, free meals that are given at the community center. And I asked a question, it's how many, uh, were being turned away? And, uh, the county manager followed up on that. I got an email from, from Miss Laura Almarica, and she indicated that approximately, uh, six, I believe, were being not served as a result of, uh, of the request for the county to, uh, provide some additional funds, uh, to cover the, the concrete. And, uh, when I got those numbers, I, I felt that, you know, this was something that, uh, that concerned me, and I think it should concern all of us, was that we have citizens in the county who qualify, uh, for the concrete meal program. They would like to participate, uh, whether it be for convenience, not being able to prepare their meals the way they like to for themselves, or economically or whatever. And if they're turning some away, uh, there is somewhat of a prior, prioritizing system in place, uh, but from my understanding, it's possibly not as, as effective as it should be. But, you know, as a board, I feel like that if we're gonna have a program that serves our seniors, uh, we should try to serve them as many as, as qualify as possible. And to turn away six, uh, I just feel that it's something that we really don't wanna do. We might be turning away someone that really, that really needs this service. And, uh, over the years, Alamo Commission has been getting the same amount of budget funds, uh, that we've been given, uh, for a number of years. I, I, I don't, I say it says. I should also note that until this year, we have not requested an increase in the overmatch from the counties in 15 years. So at the current time, uh, we appropriate $27,402 a year for concrete meals. And, uh, uh, they had requested an additional $3,517 to cover the overmatch. The overmatch being that, uh, the Alamo Commission had to go into their fund balance to cover the cost of the additional meals for Gates County. So I was, uh, I contacted the county manager, the district chair, and, uh, uh, the finance director. Hopefully, we can find $3,000 somewhere. But, uh, so that we can provide meals for the eligible elderly that seek to get, uh, concrete meals serviced. And I would ask the board today, uh, to, uh, have that compassion to, uh, authorize the finance director, county manager, to, uh, find $3,517 to cover the overmatch, so that our citizens in Gates County can receive the concrete meals at the community center rather than being turned away. Those six people.
If I may?
Yes.
Just as a reminder, when we discussed this back at the budget time, for everyone to understand, historically, the match that we required was only a little over 10,000, I believe. Is that-
I want to say seven, 10, 7.
But the county was, had been providing 27,000 instead of what we were supposed to be matching. This year, they did ask for the increase, and when they sent the numbers and the information, I asked Laura Almarico for further explanation and asked Ms. Hofford to follow up on it. The information she sent us includes, according to what she told me, the money, funding they received for the sites, for the food, for the food sites, excuse me. And then it includes the site manager contract, and then it includes salary expenses. And she told Sheriff Hofford that it included salary expenses for all of the Alamo Commission aging staff. And that is a total of 17 people, but all of them do not work with nutrition. So the recommendation was made to continue funding that $27,000 since all of the salary expenses that they were including for Gates County did not include the nutrition. It included people who do not work with nutrition. Because some of her reports that she sent, she sent us talked specifically about nutrition, but then they lumped in other services provided by aging. So it was confusing, even after I spoke with her, about were these true salaries that were actually needed to be included in the funding for the nutrition site. So that was why the recommendation was made, and the commissioners approved the funding at the continued level that had been done in the past.
All right, and hearing that, uh, tells how we got there. What they have done is they've turned away six of our citizens, and that's where we are now. I would, would hope that we would, uh, would have that, uh, concern for them and, and, uh, appropriate $3,500, $3,517 so that we can serve all of our citizens in county.
Are you going to make that in a form of, of motion?
Yes, uh, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we appropriate $3,517,000 to cover the concrete meal, uh, overmatch, so that the, uh, six applicants that were turned away can be included in the concrete meals. For this budget year.
Okay, and is that, my understanding, that was not, not, that's not necessarily six per day, it was six on one occasion?
No, it was six overall. Or my unders, maybe.
Yes.
Six overall, or six per day, or?
No, it was not six per day, it's six people that were turned away evidently since August the 1st.
Yeah, and basically-
Do I understand that being six meals?
Yes.
Six persons, six meals, but if, if we give this overmatch, they could also take in a separate one if, if necessary. But what it does, it builds, it, that builds their, uh, what they're having to take out of their fund balance. While the six is a number, I'm sure that number could vary some, but they would not turn them away once they get the overmatch.
What would, Natalie, what would the situation, we approved the $3,517, and they could turn anybody else away, what would the, what would happen if that money, they would have a reserve?
Any money that we give them, they keep, they goes into their fund balance.
It does, it does.
So they have a fund balance.
And that's what they've been operating on, uh?
That's why it happened to have an increase. And, and it's, you saw on the paper, the ice fleet, Blue Line gave $1,000. You can have different corporations who will give them money. And certainly, we don't want anyone to get a fund break.
You know, there's, we need to keep in mind that a program can grow and grow and grow to the point where it has to be adjusted, has to be looked at, that kind of thing. So, and, uh, addressing the matter going forward. Just need to keep that in mind, that it could be, they come back to us and say, last week, we turned down 25,000. At some point, we got to reevaluate program altogether. We don't see anyone that'll help. I will say, the motion is on the floor.
And I do have a question. Does this include, if necessary, going into fund balance? Instead of buying the funds, I just want to be clear.
Now, with that, obviously, that would be in place to, to get it, if we didn't have it in some of the other line items that we could pull from, uh, fund balance would be in place if we can get it on.
Done good, says.
Yeah, we're getting funds from there as well, so.
Ten times the three things we sold last week's $30, so it would be a slow profit.
Maybe this, this stuff we're selling will come in with big bucks.
The county's fund balance is not in the fund balance here, operation.
Every kind of balance is not there.
No, it would be county fund balance. We have, we'd have no control over their money.
And this would be this year only, not necessarily that we would do this next year. We would, we would have to look at, uh-
Numbers.
I mean, that would be, it's just what this time, one, one time. Any other questions? It doesn't, I know most people think, well, that's not a lot of money, but we're counting against it, it's a lot of money, but, uh...
Several lives are adequate.
Several of those adequate.
Tom Stifler, you and Natalie had talked with her director of policy.
I've talked to her several months ago, um-
I'd like to hear your comments.
I have not talked to her since the sixth, um, I talked to her during budget time. And, um, like I say, the counties were, because in the, in the table that we had got, the counties were, um, the funds were, I couldn't make sense of the type each county was charged, because it, um, for the over, what did they call it, the over-
The overmatch.
Overmatch. Because it didn't seem to be based on size of county or the population of county. And, uh, then she was telling us about salaries from, all the salaries were lumped together.
I, I'll read this to you for, for, this is the, uh, response from this Almarica. She said, "Last fall, I did an analysis to determine the rate of overspendages per county. At that time, it was determined that Gates County was overspending by approximately $10,550. This amount included the entire cost of the program, including staff, operational costs, meals, et cetera. I also accounted for all the revenues per county, including, uh, HCCBG, county match, consumer contributions, et cetera. It was determined that eight of 10 counties were overspending their respective county allocations, ultimately causing us to utilize a significant amount of fund balance each year. In an effort to slow the rate of the decline in the fund balance, we put a plan in place to try to increase funding to support the program and avoid cutting services. One component of the plan was to seek additional support from the counties. In the spring, I asked each county manager to consider increasing their overmatch by one-third of their respective county over expenditures in order to sustain the program at its current levels. This meant that Gates County was asked to increase their overmatch by $3,517 for a total of $30,919. This request was not approved or budgeted for. The county did not provide the overmatch of $27,402, which we greatly, did provide the overmatch of $27,402, which we are greatly appreciating. However, without the additional increase, we were faced with cutting services in order to realign our spending with our revenues. We understand that many of the counties we serve operate a tight budget. This was the reason we only asked the county to increase their over, their match by one-third of their expenditures. The Alamo Commission would still be responsible for remaining over expenditures incurred by each county. I should also note that until this year, we have not requested an increase in the overmatch from counties in 15 years despite increasing costs and participation over the years." So that, uh, basically, uh, captures how they got $2, $3,517 after they did this analysis. And ultimately, it meant they had to cut back on their meals and stop serving six people in Gates County.
There is a motion on the floor. It is a part of discussion. The motion on the floor is that we appropriate on one-time basis $3,517 to the Alamo Commission Nutrition Group to cover the over, uh- seventeen dollars to the Alamo Commission Nutrition Group to cover the over, uh, concrete meals that have been served at the community center. All those in favor of that and that have come out of fund balance? Potentially. Potentially. You can take thirty dollars from those deals?
I'll bring it back to me on the twenty-first.
Okay. If need be, take mine from balance. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, and it passes. Okay, I believe I complete our new business, uh, in, no, some citizens. Five-minute recess, we can't do commissioners' comments? Okay, bye. Okay, five-minute recess. I'm sure you weren't here on comments. Guys, back to place so that we can get started during the five-minute wait, we have a citizen comment. We need to hear you, Ms. Alice.
We've had her on camera before.
Mary, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
And some terrorists, if I pass out for the horror of the night.
Please don't do that.
Lady, can I say?
Uh, I, I wanted to speak on the solar energy and I know that a lot of times when you feel strongly, you put a spin on things. I'm gonna try not to put a spin on anything, I just want to ask that everybody put things into proportion on the solar energy business and, uh, I just made a few notes here, uh, comments that, uh, the planning and the commissioners made, uh, and what I want is proportion and perspective on these things, really. Please, try to think. Some of these things, you don't have to have expert advice on. First of all, the birds and the animals and so forth. I think that all of the solar farms in existence were thrown farmally, I don't know, but wherever land they are, uh, I think our chemical sprays, our phone machinery will probably take out as many animals as a solar panel, or multiple solar panels. We have taken out animals by hunting, we've taken out animals by driving our cars, we've taken out animals by having cats, et cetera. So keep it in perspective, keep it in proportion, please. Okay, my second is jobs. I would love for Gates County to have a lot of jobs, a lot of good income, and a good living for everybody. How many jobs were destroyed by putting up that solar farm? If it was a farm, how many farm jobs were destroyed? How many jobs were created by creating the solar panels, what they stand on, and somebody to get them along, and somebody to work on, everybody's on, keep it in proportion, keep it in perspective, please. Uh, let's see, hedge funds. What do we use every day that hedge funds have invested in? How many companies? Do we go to Walmart? Are there any hedge funds invested in Walmart? Keep it in perspective, don't spend it. Uh, this is hard for me.
Good job.
Last of all, I don't know what you do about taxes, I have no idea. Is there some way that we can continue to tax that land that the solar farm is on and get as much as we did forever and ever as from the farm was there? I don't know. You guys know that. Is there some way that you can keep from depreciating land under the solar farm so that you can still get taxes from the land at least? But basically that's what you're getting from farm land and woodland, right? Okay, I don't know taxes. I can't even spell tax, so forget that one. Uh, reclaiming after the solar farm collapses or goes bankrupt and so forth. Yeah, you need to say, all of that stuff belongs to the county or something, then have your recycled people go in there and get all that metal junk, all that glass junk. You get a lot of money, F-5 bucks. I've called in stuff to be bucks before. We get quite a bit of money from recycling. So I think that somebody in Gates County would probably be up for going in there and tearing it out, putting it in a big old truck and hauling it to recycle. So, that's my opinion. And I just, just, I mean, when I hear people comment, it's like, oh, you're gonna kill all the birds, you can't do that. No, keep it in perspective, compare it to what's out there, it's still killing birds that we're using every day. That's all I ask, perspective, proportion, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. You did a nice job.
You should be grateful.
See, that wasn't so hard, we didn't have to call to tell.
I must say that I was in school with Mary Alice and she was top student.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any other additional comments?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Anne Howell, I'm a member of Betsadida chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, and Elizabeth Seddon, and I appreciate the fact that you did the proclamation. We have a meeting next Thursday. If you have that proclamation written up, I would be happy to take it and present it at our meeting.
Okay, we will have it, I can, we can probably sign it, uh, so.
Thank you.
We will get, make sure you get, get it or can you pick it up?
And we will be celebrating Constitution Week.
Good, hopefully, and hopefully the schools can celebrate it as well. Okay, commissioners' comments, um, starting down at the end, when was the commissioner Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would like to, uh, to say all in attendance and, and all paying attention that, uh, certainly appreciate the participation. Uh, these meetings, as you well know, are, are designed for education as well as, is, uh, for the presentations that are made. And, uh, we do pay attention to them, we're fortunate to be your commissioners, but we're commissioners for all. Uh, we do, and, and I think maybe I've said this in the past, and that is, we do disagree to agree, uh, and we agree on those decisions, but those decisions are made through tolerance, a little bit of education, but primarily what our citizenship desires. Uh, fortunate to serve with these commissioners, uh, we do get along and, and, uh, I appreciate each and every one of them, and I appreciate you being in attendance.
Appreciate y'all being here today too, and, uh, I appreciate your comments, you did very well, maybe nervous a little bit, maybe. And appreciate all the rest of you being here, and we only have one of our planning board members left now, but I really do appreciate the work they do. Those, uh, Glenda will know she was, she served on the planning board, there is a lot of preparation for those members in there. Every one of them in there take it very diligently and very importantly and spend a lot of time preparing for that meeting, and it's not something they just take the light, they don't vote on it and get on home. They spend time in there and it's been quite a bit of time in there, I appreciate it. Uh, just thank all of you for coming.
I too thank everyone for coming and thank you for just bearing with us as we go through this process and try to make the best decision possible. As you can well see, it is a process, and we gotta give considerations to, uh, all angles and as has been pointed out, uh, gotta take all facts into consideration. But, uh, thanks for coming, thanks for being involved. Uh, I do have something I'd like to address the board with. Uh, we do have an issue that's coming up before us with the, uh, uh, the newer Gates House Assistive Facility where we have to appoint a, a community advisory committee up in the communication with county manager and the chair. Uh, we have to formally, uh, appoint a board, we can use a joint board that's already in place, the nursemaid advisory board, we can use that, but we have to go through a process of getting them approved, and, uh, that's gonna be coming up in our next meeting. County manager, we probably ought to send the commissioners, uh, a copy of the email process and the, and the general statute, uh, so that we can move forward. Uh, I thought we might, after I spoke with the county manager via email, I thought we might need to approve putting an advertisement in the paper today regarding, uh, trying to get an additional member to serve on the, uh, advisory committee or the, uh, assistive living, uh, facility, but, uh, nevertheless, we didn't get to that, but, uh, it may be something that we may want to think about so that we won't go and delay the process too long. But anyway, that's coming up, and, uh, appreciate the board, the way we work together, to, to point out that we'll always agree, but be agree, not, uh, to be, not be agreeable, to be agreeable, and, uh, try to make the best decisions for the county. So, uh, thank you all for your, uh, support and also your confidence in allowing us to, uh, make these decisions for the county.
All right. I want you to know that, uh, I enjoy working with this board up here. I like every one of them, in fact, I want you to know, I mean, you guys know, I, I love you, I really do. And, uh, I will never be one to vote in the opposite direction of any of you guys or all of you guys collectively just to be adverse. I won't do that. I'll look for every opportunity I can to, uh, to meet you and, uh, and I think you hear that in the end of my comments and, uh, in the discussion before we vote, so I hope you, I hope you're listening then too, because I'm, I'm reaching out to you, uh, because I, I enjoy working with you and you're people who can be worked with, and that's very encouraging. Uh, to our planning board, you know, I got very passionate a while ago, uh, I agree with Mr. Felton and the rest of the board, we do appreciate what you do, and when we make our comments up here, I want you to keep in mind that when you're over there discussing it, we're not there, you know? We don't get to hear everything that you hear and, and we don't get to hear all of your discussions, so, you know, we're, I'm just looking at one line sentence up here that says, "One year moratorium," I don't get here, I don't get to hear all the other stuff. But I did get to hear from all the phone calls I got on this. It's amazing, I got more phone calls on this than I've ever gotten on the sewer, than I've ever gotten on the commerce park, than I've ever gotten on the library, phone calls, more phone calls on this one topic. And maybe that drives, uh, uh, the passion that I shared a while ago, that passion is real, it's, it's, uh, this is our county. Um, Mary Alice, on, on the taxes part, I want you to know that the value of that land's going up, okay? So that taxing center is not property tax, okay? So we're gonna get more than we would have gotten if it was farm land. Okay, just to answer that question for you. I do thank everyone for coming, everyone for their participation. Um, Gates County is a great place, it's our county, and we need to protect it at every turn, at every cost, we need to protect this jewel that we have, and, uh, if we had a planning board that didn't care, why would we be upset about that? So I thank you, Billy, uh, and the rest of the board that you care and that you're putting your due diligence in. Thank you.
I too also would like to thank everyone for coming. I do appreciate the boards that we have of our citizens, they put in a lot of hours on issues, uh, and, and, uh, we really need them to do their due diligence, and I, I appreciate, I do appreciate the efforts they have made, not only the planning board, the board of adjustments, but we have so many more boards as well. Uh, and it's truly remarkable that we have such outstanding members to those boards that are willing to give their time for the county. As you can see, um, as I was looking over thinking about what comments my colleagues have made, if you look at the national scene, the state scene, civility sometimes is like in Washington DC and Raleigh, North Carolina. You know, if someone's for it, I'm against attitude, uh, and that's why we have a deadlock right now in the general assembly, uh, we are, we have not passed a budget. Uh, as you see with our board, uh, we don't always agree, but I have a great deal of respect for each member of the board, we are all willing to, um, do our work, we are all willing to learn, I mean, listen to each other and try to come to a consensus that we can all live with. Uh, and I think that's a, a, a characteristic of a good board who is trying to work together for the betterment of the county, and that's what we're trying to do. Today, I didn't, didn't recognize, um, someone in the ordinance, uh, that was sitting out there that I should have. Uh, last week, the 4H was up at Greenville when, where the county commissioners across the state were meeting, and we had a representative there from Gates County, one of our 4H members, and she was in, I was there today, and so I went back and when I saw Kelly Boone, who's 4H director, went back there to speak to her, the little girl was there as well, and she said, I said, "Hi, June, what's meeting?" She said, "Y'all were talking about a lot of things, I had no, uh, no idea what was going on." Uh, and, but she said, and she realized, said, "It's a very slow process," and I said, "Government moves slowly." Sometimes you would wish we could be on the fast track.
Sometimes.
Sometimes. Uh, but, you know, yeah, I think it's wonderful to have our program in our 4H so that our young, uh, adults can learn about government and to see it in action. It's something, it's one thing to read about it in a textbook, it's something else to see it in practice. Uh, so I encourage people to take an interest, whatever your age, into your government, because this is the closest government you have to us. And like, uh, must have always been saying about phone calls, I had three phone calls this morning before I came here. One, only one was on solar, all two on all the issues facing the county. So, it's, uh, and I'm grateful that people feel free to call, and that's what we're here for, we need to hear from you. And listen, thank you for coming, and, uh, we meet again on the third Monday night, which I believe is September the twenty-first, uh, at seven o'clock here at the courthouse, we would love to have you here. Okay, at this time?
I know, I know the intention has someone on the end of a different location. Okay, I didn't know if you checked before.
Okay, we need to have a motion to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three, three one eight, eleven, concerning legal, economic, development, real estate, and personnel.
Remove. Second.
Motion's been made and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you, we will give y'all time to exit. And, um. I will entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and second, all those in favor come in out of closed session. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you. I will take a recess, hold lunch, and come back. Okay. Uh, I need to enter into, um, closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three, dash three one eight, eleven, for legal, economic, development, personnel matters, do I have a motion entering closed session?
So move. Second.
Motion's been made and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to come out of closed session?
So move. Second.
A motion's been made and promptly second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, I'll recognize Commissioner Owens.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that, uh, we instruct our county manager, um, to take action that we discussed in closed session.
Okay.
And, and to move forward to, um, contact the landowners with that also.
Okay, motion has been made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and promptly second, discussion. Motion's been made, promptly second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, moving on to the second item, um, I recognize Commissioner Jordan.
Um, Madam Chair, I made a motion to direct county manager to develop correspondence, uh, to send the board information, uh, for approval by the board commissioners of that the Board of Education office that addresses the need for internal working relationship with the county management and the Board of Education office. Let me say that again.
She said she got it.
They got it.
A motion has been made, do I hear a second?
So.
Motion's been made and seconded, in a discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I will entertain a motion to recess until September the twenty first, our ninth meeting.
So moved? Second.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Excuse me, you would actually recess until Friday, when there's a joint meeting with the Board of Education at ten o'clock?
Okay, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I, I apologize, I forgot you had a.
I was trying to take a motion.
Let's try this again, um, do I hear a motion to recess until Friday, September the fourth, at ten o'clock with the Board of Education?
So moved? Second.
Okay, here you go, a motion has been made and promptly seconded, discussion, I don't think will be any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Anybody opposed, we're at a fight on right now. Okay, thank you.